Good evening, everyone. We are here at the Marlboro Public Schools School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 29th. It is 7:31. I will call the meeting to order. I would like to remind everyone that we are being videotaped and streamed on WMCT-TV. And if I can have everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All righty. Moving on to, we have no presentations, correct? No? Moving on.
Well, we could stand up.
Kinda.
Nothing on the agenda.
Should be suspended.
We can. I don't know where they are on the agenda.
They are 9A.
They're 9A to prove the trip, but I think they want to show us their stuff.
Do you guys want to do a little demonstration of their robot?
Yes, please.
Okay. Let's suspend the rules for the presentation.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All right. Motion on the table and seconded to suspend the rules.
You won't mind.
Yeah. All in favor. Motion carries.
Motion to proceed with 9A.
Okay. We'll move on. So, motion on the table and seconded to move forward with 9A. It's the action item. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor. All righty. 9A. So, this is the Marlboro High School Robotics Overnight Trip to the World Champion Competition.
Woo!
So, the green light should be on when you hit the button. Is the green light showing?
Yes.
It was on. It was currently not.
Okay. If you hit the button.
Hit it one more time, Kyle.
It was on.
There it goes.
All right. There it goes. Now, the floor is yours. You just want to tell us your name and...
All right. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
For those unaware, I'm Kyle Major. I'm currently the advisor of the Robotics Club at the Marlboro High School.
And I'm Joanne Mahoney. I am the Director of Robotics at the Middle School, and I check in with Kyle, see what he needs at the high school. So, okay. So, our, the team won the skills competition section of the state championship at Walsh Middle School, thus giving them the opportunity to go to the world competition, which is in Dallas, Texas.
Okay.
So, it was very exciting. I have to say that Atul started working with the robotics in sixth grade, and this has been his dream. So, when they made that call that they had won, it was very exciting, very exciting. So...
He's got to work on his dreams a little.
It's the first time for the high school program, at least.
Absolutely. The middle school went quite a while ago, 2014, and at that time, it was held in Anaheim, California. So, and I publicly want to thank Mary. We wouldn't have the program that we have without her support. As the principal at Whitcomb and then now as the superintendent, she has supported this program from the very beginning. We did honor her at the middle school championship, and, you know, she got a special trophy. Mary, what does it say on that trophy?
It's a leadership award.
Leadership award, okay.
That's wonderful.
And that was made special for her. So, it was, you know, we are forever grateful, and we will miss you next year, Mary. Okay. So, we have with us today Atul and Andy Zhang. I think you all know Andy. Can you explain?
Yeah.
Atul, use your microphone.
No, I'm sorry. Couldn't hear me?
Yeah.
You're fine. Teacher, boys. Oh, okay.
We can hear you. It's just so the people at home can hear.
Oh, okay.
Hello. I just wanted to say thank you. I want to say thank you to everyone, all of you guys, and especially Mrs. Mahoney, Kyle, my mom, everyone supporting us for us to be able to make Worlds. It's been six years for me to make it here, so it's been fun, a long journey, somewhere finally we've reached like the end goal, right? Make Worlds. And it's been a fun year, especially for me and Andy. I know it's Andy's last year, too. He's graduating, going off to better places, but we've had so much fun, like building this robot, just competing, learning so many more experiences, just collaborating with other schools. It's been a great experience, and we would love to just show you what we've accomplished.
Yes, please do.
All righty.
You can tell them a little about the game.
So, while Atul is getting our robot, I'll give you a preview of the game. So, the main objective of the game is there are multiple stakes of multiple heights. There's these mobile stakes that we can put rings on with each ring giving one point and a top ring being worth three points. And then there's like mid-stakes, which are slightly higher than the wall stakes, I mean, the mobile goals. And then there's a very tall, like, middle stake that is about like...
How many feet? It's like here. It's like five feet.
Yeah, basically. Yeah. And...
Did you move the stake out here so the video can...
Yeah. Get in camera.
Getting camera.
Now, everyone can see.
So, Andy, do you know the, Andy?
So... Yeah.
Do you know the challenge ahead of time?
Uh, yes. The next year's game will actually be announced at Worlds. Got it.
The final day of Worlds, they announce the new game.
Sure.
So, you'll be able to see it live if you're at Worlds. The rest of the people just get the video.
Got it.
From which point forward, you can start building your next year's robot.
Right now, we only have a name release. It's called Pushback?
Yeah.
Pushback.
Pushback is the game name, but we know nothing else about it.
Got it.
What was the game name for this one?
It's called High Stakes.
High Stakes.
Ah.
So, yeah, talking about our robot, the main goal was to put the rings on the goal, right? So, we kind of do it with these hooks. They slam them on the goal, right? So...
Kyle, you want to kick another one?
Yeah.
We can put multiple. And the goal was to do it as quickly as possible to score the most points.
I'll show them.
And you're, yeah, and you're supposed to put your color, right? There's a team of red and a team of blue.
Got it.
So, you know, the blue ones would be for the blue team, so you want to avoid those. And Andy was talking about that higher stake, right? How do you put a ring on a higher stake? Yeah. So, what we did was we have this little arm thing that kind of moves. So, when I pick up another ring, instead of getting stuck on the goal, it gets stuck on this thing, and we can put it on the higher stake.
Wow.
And it's at the perfect height, so it very smoothly goes on. The front thing is angled at such a way that if we line that up in the middle of the highest stake, once we trigger the arm, it goes on essentially every time. It's very accurate at this point.
So, for the portion that we actually qualified for Worlds, which is the skills, how it works is there's one minute of a driver control period and one minute of an autonomous period. So, the robot gets to drive itself for a minute in a pre-programmed route, and in the driver control, it's the same setup, it's just now someone gets to drive it. I believe we scored 50 points in driver and it was 42 in autonomous. So, how you calculate that is each ring is one point and the top ring is three. So, it's a bunch of rings. I don't know how many it got, but it was, we programmed it so much, we ran the route so many times, kept checking it, just for hopefully it to work the one time at the competition, and it did. So, we're pretty proud.
And for further clarification, the skills field is a particular setup of rings. They're in a particular orientation. They're the same exactly every time. If you have the field at your school or just locally, you can set skills up yourself and run your routine as many times as you need to see how it goes for you, at which point you can then go to the competition and do your routines. Your highest total can only be from one competition, so you don't get the best from each from like different competitions. You have to do well in both, from the single time, the single performance at a single place that we went.
Okay. All righty.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry, you know me. So, you guys get the information for like the stake size before you get going, right? So, that way you can program how high you need that arm to go.
And you can order the field parts themselves, so once you put it together on the field, you'll physically see it, but if you don't have it at that point, you can look up the dimensions.
Gotcha.
And we have a field, which is called...
Can you, can you go to the...
Yeah, go to the...
So, we have a field at both the middle school and the high school.
So, Mrs. Mahoney, was that field the thing you wrote the grant asking for? You actually did get the money and built and got the field?
No, I did not get the money.
Okay. How'd you get the field?
But that's, we, well, we've had the field.
Oh.
What we were looking for this year for the grant were the risers, because now what they've done at competition is they've taken it up off the floor. So, they, our field at the middle school is on the floor, and the risers, do you know how high they are?
They're like roughly about this high. It raises the field off the floor and it makes it much harder to move. The walls aren't actually attached to anything other than themselves. They're not attached to the floor, and the robots can move pretty quickly. So, if you run into the wall hard enough, it will just kind of move it.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty big deal on the wall stakes, especially since they are attached to that wall.
Yeah.
So, it really reduces your accuracy if your field moves a bunch. So, by raising it off the floor and putting it on something that's a much more anchored, it reduces that variable by like quite a lot. It's helpful, and it also, it's the field you're going to be competing on in most high-level competitions, so it's nice to have the experience, because it's a different field of view than normal for a lot of the people.
Yeah. We've had the one at the middle school ever since we began working with robotics, so that was 2011.
Right.
But it's the risers. So, I'll write a grant again for next year.
I was going to say, write a grant and inform some of us.
And I want to make sure that the community knows about this and that this is a need, because we have a lot of businesses in the community and other people in the community that might be interested in supporting it. MEF wasn't able to provide it this year, but as you said, there's future years, but there may be other people in the community that might be interested in supporting it.
We can talk, Michelle.
Well, and I was going to say, it might be something also to make sure that MADC actually knows.
Of course.
Because as they're having conversations with businesses around town, as Michelle was kind of alluding to, they may want to step up and be a part of this, especially with the notoriety of you all going to Worlds and who knows, right?
Who knows?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, another, so the team is three of you, right? Betsy is the third one?
Yes. She wasn't able to make it today, but yes, it's just us three.
She's a busy girl.
Yeah. We also, I don't know if it was mentioned, we won the create award at the state championship.
And what is that?
So, it's an award based off the most creative design and approach to stuff out of all, all the hundred or eighty teams it was, who had the most creative. And this was done through interviews. So, us three were interviewed several times just to, for the judges to see how our robot works, as well as our documentation. And I can give you like a brief, what kind of made us creative, right? Two things. I guess the first thing was our approach to our programming aspect. The biggest thing was we were able to track the robot's position from the start autonomously through a bunch of calculations. And what that would able, allow us to do is instead of telling the robot, okay, drive forward and then turn right and then drive forward, turn left, we could just tell it, okay, follow this path, and it would do it almost perfectly. The goal was to be able to kick the robot off its path and it would get back on, and it worked. So, it was pretty cool. The really creative part was we were able to do it with no extra sensors. A lot of these other teams are using a lot of sensors, which add weight, complexity, and a bunch of other calculations, which we found out a way to just avoid it, but still have the same net outcome, and that was super creative. As well as just the robot itself, some of our design elements were creative, they found, and it was great. We were so shocked that we won. We weren't expecting. I think if you watched the video, we all put our hands up like, us? It's really us?
You could probably see my extremely shocked face while I was walking up like, I have to take a picture now.
Yeah.
What is your...
And as well, that the other thing that they thought was quite creative was our approach to communication with other teams and how well each of our members knew the robot itself. A lot of the times when you are judging, you'll notice that some of the kids do not talk much, or they aren't able to like very well explain others' work, or some parts of the robot they don't know a lot about, but each of our members knows quite a bit about this robot and are able to talk to each other's work and compliment each other, and a lot of the judges found that quite impressive.
That's great. What is your team's name? Do you have a name?
Yeah. So, we have a number and a name. Our number is 43440X, and our name is X-Square, just to follow up the number.
Got it.
And does the robot go in carrion?
Yeah. How do you, how do you translate?
Big box.
A box.
A big black box. It kind of looks like one of the ones you take to like a soundstage.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Great.
So, you leave on Monday, the 5th of May?
Yeah, Monday, the 5th at 8:00 in the morning.
So, when you compete, there's three days. Is it like a knockout?
The first day we're not competing, then on the 6th, there's a skills day that's entirely dedicated to our first practice match, which doesn't count for anything, and then just running the skills as much as we want to. And then the next day after that, we'll start the qualifying matches. We'll have 10 in total. We'll play 10 matches, and after that, depending on how we do, we might make it to the final elimination rounds, where it's single elim tournament style, where if we lose once, we're out of the tournament. But the upside of that part of it is that your alliance partner isn't random anymore. During the actual competition, things are randomized to keep it pretty balanced, so you aren't aware of your alliance partner, especially at this kind of event, you have a much higher chance of not having met them, so you just kind of have to roll with it.
Sure.
And this is Worlds, so there are teams from other countries?
Yes.
So, we have, yeah, 53 countries are competing at this, and we have a couple of China, China teams coming, Shang, sorry, where is it? Singapore?
Singapore.
Taiwan.
Wow.
Lot of diverse countries. It's going to be a fun experience. Mexico, definitely, yes.
Yeah. New Zealand was in our division.
Yeah.
Who else?
Someone from New Zealand, I think was in the division nowhere in.
It's literally Worlds.
Yeah.
This Vex Robotics is a worldwide organization.
How many people from the United States are represented? Do you know?
It's a, it's a lot of teams. It's probably a majority.
Sure.
It's per state in the United States, how many teams per state?
It's like roughly 15 a state.
Yeah.
Roughly 15 a region, and most of those regions are individual states. I know that for our region, I believe it was 18 teams from the high school region of Massachusetts itself made it to Worlds, and that's off of awards and skills performances and just the winners of each tournament.
And you competed against all of those others, 17, in the last tournament?
Yeah.
And beat them all?
In regionals, we faced quite a few of them.
Yeah.
With the same robot?
Yes.
Same challenge?
Yes.
Yeah, same exact game challenge.
So, we're not worried.
The same for each year.
And another question, do you ever, I mean, is it ever strategized where you're trying to block your competitors as well, right?
Yeah, it gets pretty aggressive, definitely.
That's what I'm, that's what I was thinking.
Since it's a 2v2, there's a lot of offense-defensive roles.
Right.
It's very strategic. A biggest, they have rules to prevent that. There's five, you can't pin someone against a wall for five seconds.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. So, there are a bunch of rules that they like enforce. You can't hold more than two rings. You can't like hog them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can't possess more than two goals.
You can't put the blue ones out of the way.
Yeah, you can't.
Well, you can do that.
You can.
You can troll your opponents and like move the rings out of their path.
Right.
But you can't possess more than three rings in your intake or robot. You can't hold more than two goals at a time, but you can push any number of goals. They just can't be in your possession, which means they can't be in your clamp, essentially.
Can you attack another robot?
Yes.
Kind of, with limitations.
Yes, you can.
But you'd like, you can slam into them.
And we do. It's not BattleBots.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah.
You don't have a weapon, but you can ram into any robot.
There's a lot of strategy behind it. Like, there's four robots and five of those goals, so each robot can only hold one, so there's always one that's left over.
Right.
So, now each team is trying to fight to get that last fifth one.
Right.
And then that creates that struggle of like offense-defense and...
And that's why you've got the alliance, right?
Exactly.
So, you can work with somebody and say, go get them and I'll get the ring.
Yeah.
That's the idea, keeping consistent communication during the match to...
So, obviously, obviously, you saw the 17 other teams from here, and how many from Massachusetts besides yourself, or is it just you guys?
No. All 18 are gone.
All 18? Okay. All right. So, my question, I guess, is how many adjustments do you make during those days?
Yeah.
To, like, you know, obviously, you know the other 17 from Massachusetts, and you made adjustments when you saw them, and I'm sure they went back and you fine-tuned things or whatever, but when you get there and now you're in Worlds and you're, obviously, everybody's watching everybody else, how many, do you make a lot of adjustments on the fly or at night you think about what did you...
Not, no, not really during the competition, definitely between competitions. So, this is our third iteration of the robot.
Gotcha.
So, we've taken it apart completely and then rebuilt something new three ti, or three times, so, and one between when we qualified for Worlds and this one, so this is...
Yeah, between regionals and now, we built this robot.
You've rebuilt it.
Gotcha.
Oh, wow. This is the Worlds edition.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. We made it smaller and a little bit more agile, because speed has been a huge component of this game.
But, but like you said, yes, we do look at other teams and see like, oh, what did they do well, and vice versa, right? They look at us and like, what did we do well, and everyone takes inspiration. A lot of the robots look really similar at this point, like at the end, because everyone realized this is probably the best way to do it.
Certain things you can do, right?
So, yeah. Turned off.
My battery is dead. His heart's got tired. International language, like what happens if you, you get paired in an alliance with someone from, from Singapore and you don't speak the language?
They indicate that they need a translator.
Oh, okay.
Before they go to the event, they can add a special note that they need a translator at the event for any language. They have translators for all of them, including sign language.
Right.
Oh.
They need that for assistance in communication with their alliance partners or any other people, including the judges, who don't all speak every language that's going to be there. That translator will essentially be part of that team for as much of the event as they can.
Yeah. So, the primary language that the event is in is in English?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Okay.
Fantastic. Yes! Will you, well, you're going to come back and see us anyways, of course, because you're a part of us, so you'll let us know, but...
They can't go unless we vote.
We have to vote, yes. Make a motion to approve their trip. Second.
All right. Motion, second. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor of bringing back the gold to Worlds?
Let's go! Yay! Let's go!
Best of luck to you.
Before you leave, Andy, do you want to divulge to us where you're going to school?
Congratulations.
I already know, but you can tell us.
I'm going to Massachusetts Institute of Technology, or better known as MIT.
Woo! Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And is this the field that you think you want to pursue? Are you interested in robotics?
Right now, I know I definitely want to go into computer science, so the coding or like aspect of robotics, but I'm debating double majoring mathematics and computer science or electrical engineering and computer science.
There's a decent math course over there.
Right.
As a computer scientist, I can agree.
Yeah. All righty. Well, best of luck and congratulations and...
Yes. Congratulations.
You have a wonderful trip.
Yes. Yeah, and have fun.
Yeah, we will, Friday.
All righty.
Send pictures and video. We'll do a video. Yeah, we'll do videos.
There'll be a lot of photos.
Oh, your father's going.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to be watching it live the whole time.
We're going to have a lot of photos.
Paul is the photographer.
All righty.
Yes. Thank you.
All righty. We'll go back to the...
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Okay. We'll move, backing up to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor Christian. The Goodnow Principal's Search Committee screened and interviewed potential principal candidates the week of April 14th. I'd like to thank Director of Human Resources Patricia Brown and committee members, Assistant Superintendent Roberts Gaza, Principal Clyde P. Pantazopoulos, staff members Melissa Turpak and Simon Poser, and parents Laura Krietman and Carlo Penske for participating on the search committee. Tomorrow, the two finalists will be visiting Goodnow School, and they have a very full schedule, and so tomorrow we'll be welcoming Jennifer Collins, who has been working in education for 25 years. Ms. Collins is currently the Assistant Principal for the Uxbridge Public Schools at the Taft Early Learning Center, a pre-K to 3 elementary school. Formerly, Ms. Collins taught in grades K1 and 2 in the Marlboro Public Schools and was a teacher leader for the second grade at Jarick Elementary School. And the second candidate is Andrew Hall. He's been working in education for over 28 years. Mr. Hall has been the principal of Elmwood Street Elementary School, a pre-K to two school in the Millbury Public Schools for the last 11 years. So we look forward to visiting them and having members of the Goodnow community and administration and principals all spend some time with them tomorrow.
Excellent.
I also expected my next report that we'll be updating, that we are also doing a high school principal search, and that posting will close next week. So we don't have timelines for the committee on that yet. Also wanted to update everyone on the citywide PTO meeting that was held on Monday, April 14th. The PTOs at that meeting reviewed the April 8th School Committee Walking and No Bus Zone Presentation. We also talked about the Richer School Building Project. We have been trying to recruit some parents to participate in full-day exercises we've been working on, on our ed plan. And we also scheduled tentatively June and August meetings in the hopes that the new superintendent could attend these meetings. One is a traditional meeting, a transitional meeting, and then the other one, a launch meeting for next year. We look forward to that opportunity. Finally, I do, I mentioned that I received, did the presentation for the citywide PTO meetings members on April 8th about the walking zones, the no-bus zones. And I want to remind the parents and community members, I did send out information about this, that on Thursday, we were holding two community forums in the Marlborough High School Little Theaters. We've made some slight changes to some of the tentative walking zones since the last presentation, based on some feedback. But we're looking for some public comments during that session so that we can look at what we are planning. The forums are scheduled at 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. You just need to attend one, you don't have to attend both, but everyone is welcome. Any questions or comments?
I just have an FYI. I just want to make sure you're aware that Thursday night is also when the music department is checking in for their trip.
Yeah, they originally were gonna do it in the Little Theater, but they've moved.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you, you knew that was happening. It could be a little busy, but it's spaced out throughout the night, so maybe it won't be too bad. But I just wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I just also wanted to make sure that, and, well, to thank the superintendent and Mr. Wells on gathering some information that I believe was distributed to you all this afternoon, where I was asking if we could have some comparative information about other districts kind of nearby that have specific walking zones. I really felt like we needed to have some comparison conversations because frankly, our parents need to understand what other districts are experiencing as well, because we've all been having to handle transportation. And I think it was, it's helpful to have that perspective, and I appreciate you all gathering this information. Specifically, this was gathering some information around Framingham, Hudson, Maynard, Natick, and Sudbury, which, just as a reminder, we do not have any charge, any bus fees, which is just one of the things that are frankly, I think, absolutely outstanding. But there are fees in Framingham, there are fees in Maynard, Natick, and in Sudbury. There is no fee in Hudson, though. And I just think that that's part of what we need to keep in mind. There are fee structures, as well as then, in a number of cases, it is, what, two-mile walking areas in a number of the districts. So I, I just, hopefully, this is information that also can be shared and can be a part of the conversation.
It's the new first slide of the presentation on Thursday. And after those forums on Thursday, we will repost the updated presentation as well.
Great, thank you. I, I mean, I appreciate that because I think, as we know from a social media standpoint, there are a lot of people that actually go to other towns to try and source and understand what everyone is facing. I think this is just helpful information to kind of get it out there, that we are not the only community that's really needing to take a look at this. And I, I actually have to, you know, say good for the administration that we stepped out ahead of this. So, thank you so much.
I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Mrs. Hennessy said, too, talking about districts that charge a fee. And when we got rid of fees, there was a lot of thought to that process. Athletic fees, bus fees, so on and so forth, parking at the high school. When, when you reach a certain point of the free and reduced community, it's almost counterintuitive to charge. Because if you have 100 people that are participating in something and 70% of them don't have to pay, then you're only getting from 30%, and it almost, it wipes out any savings you thought you might have had, or income from that. And, um, and that's what happens with the numbers. So if there's anybody in the community that thinks, well, why don't we just start charging bus fees? Well, if you look at the population who would end up paying, it goes back to our equity issues, and it, it's no longer an equity at that point. And that was what we were trying to take away years ago when we got rid of the fees.
That's an excellent point. In a number of districts that I have worked in, we have charged fees for busing for the under two miles for students to allow the busing for people to pay for it. And it never brings in any more than, than 15 to 25% of what the total cost of that additional busing really is. Because of the fact that you, you, the fee is never the total cost of what it is for a student to ride a bus. It's usually a fraction of that, trying to offset some of the costs. But generally, to, to your point, that you end up with a lot of waivers on the fee that you, you issue out. And you don't collect as much money as you were hoping to collect when you actually initially hit those fees. So, you know, it is wonderful that Marlborough is without fees, and it's great that we can continue to do that. And certainly, you know, it, it never has the strong effect that people think it might have when you...
Right, and that, that's really why I wanted to bring that up, because I'm sure there's somebody out there going, well, if other districts are charging, why, you know... You have to understand the financial total picture.
Yes.
Before you, you know...
Yeah, I will mention that at the citywide PTO meeting, one of the questions were, could we just bus all the elementary students? It's a valid question.
Framingham does it.
But the way that the tiers and the cost per bus cost, if we went to one tier at 33 buses, it would actually probably cost us more than what we are planning on doing. And so it would still be, you know, the equation would still result in reducing educators in the district.
No, I have to commend, I have to commend you and your administration, and Matt, and the whole of looking at the total picture of, without, you know, taking your nose off your face kind of thing, so.
Well, and, and to be fair, many of us around this table can remember walking to school. I mean, I, that, that's what we did.
Even the mayor walked to school.
That, that's what we all did for many, many, many years. So it is maybe an adjustment, but I think that's been an adjustment that we've tried to start the right process on, on, you know, having the wonderful thing at the elementaries, like the walking Wednesdays, when we had the bus strike situation. We all really banded together as a community to step up to make sure that we were getting kids there safely. And I think it's just a matter of, we need to get into the mindset of, that's what we're here to do, right? Is to all work together so we can find a solution. So, again, thank you for the information. I appreciate that you're gonna add it to the presentation, not only for Thursday, but then, you know, moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Moving on. Director of Finance and Operations Report, Mr. Wells.
Excellent, thank you. So we're gonna start with food service. Food service has, the elementary schools have all achieved over 80% in participations for school lunch, which is fantastic, that, that growing, and, and as well as the middle schools, well, also reached above 80%. So we're getting a lot more participation on that lunch, which is great. We love having these kids come and eat, or we have great foods that we're offering. They really do love that fresh fruit program that we're running. It's, it's got great color to it. They love trying the new fruits that we offer, the star fruit, the dragon fruit that we put out there. So it's, it's very enticing, very interesting for them to try. Breakfast, we still struggle with. We're, we're still trying to, to draw in, but as we showed in the, in the survey, some of our students just, they won't eat breakfast. They're just not gonna do it. Or, you know, with our high schoolers, Dunkin' Donuts is fantastic, you know? It's, it's, on the way, you get your coffee, you get your donut, and, you know, we can't serve coffee and donuts, obviously, within the school. So can't compete with, with some of the offerings that are out there, so. But we continue to try and figure out how we can get breakfast more readily available at the point of entry, so we, you know, and try and entice students to grab that and take it with them and have a, you know, a second meal. Because, you know, especially at high school, you know, a lot of those students, I think, a second meal would be very welcoming, so. Transportation, we, over the past couple of weeks, we have seen the reduction in the number of callouts. We even had a few days where we did not need any coverage in any of the routes. We had all drivers show up, so we're on the downside, you know, and obviously, it's very warm outside. We're, we're feeling the, the effects of the, the warmth, and having the flu season dissipate for us has helped out a lot. We did take a little bit of a hit. We had our dispatcher left suddenly and unexpectedly, which was unfortunate, so we're, there, there was a bit of a scramble, but they, they did a great job of getting somebody in place. That person is still learning the ropes a little bit. The manager, the hub manager Monica is stepping in a little bit more to help out with that, to make sure that the transition is very smooth, and help with the training of, of that individual. But we feel pretty good about this person they put in place as well. But it was a little bit of a hiccup, you know, when you've got someone who's, you know, had settled into the roots and having, you know, partnership with the drivers. It was, it was rough to have that person leave and have to put another person in place. But seems to be transitioning well, and we, we're feeling pretty good about that. And again, we're, we're talking about the, you know, the, the no-busing zone, so we're, we're getting that information together. We're gonna get that off to NRT this week so that they can start producing something of what we would expect to see, how the routes would be laid out. Again, it's gonna be different because, you know, we're, we're gonna be running, you know, outside of an area and then running into the area. So it, it should be interesting how they map that out. We're gonna be very close with them on that, to make sure that it maps the way that we would expect it to map as well, and, and, you know, certainly use our institutional knowledge of the city to help them out with that. And then there's a copy of the financials is in your, your book. We did release the supply accounts back to the principals. As we, we're coming towards the end of the year here, we were looking and saying, okay, we feel comfortable. Sort of, we had that strategic freeze in place. We felt more comfortable releasing that now and saying, let's fill up the supply cabinets and the closets and make sure that we got everything that we need, and get a little bit of a head start on next year as well. So we're still cautiously watching that budget, but we feel pretty good we're gonna end the year in a great place. And we think that strategic freeze did help us a lot to make sure that we could end up in a balanced situation.
Thank you. Moving on. Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning, Dr. Gaza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on my report this evening is in regard to the vision for math instruction. So we are currently working through a process to develop a K through 12 vision for math instruction with the Marlborough, for the Marlborough Public Schools. As we partner with TNTP, one of the consultants who goes by Katie Garner is assisting us along the way. Katie has a really sharp math mind, and she has been instrumental in leading us through some conversations around visioning. We recently conducted a workshop with our Director of Mathematics, 6 through 12, Heather Russo, and the Elementary Math Interventionists, Jamie Miller, Rebecca Kaya, Pam Migos, and Krista Oriol, to draft priorities for an MPS math vision. Our next step is to gather input from families and caregivers. We will be sending a brief survey out to the community this upcoming month of May. April Attendance Academy, I am very pleased to report that we were fortunate to be able to hold April Vacation Attendance Academies last week. The funding for these programs came from the Targeted Assistance Grant, provided by the Department of Early and Secondary Education. Similar to the February Break Attendance Academies, the primary focus of each session was to reengage selected students into a pattern of routine attendance at school. Additionally, each session offered some general academic support to help students be better prepared for the final push of the 24-25 school year. Whitcomb School had 30 students participate, and Marlborough High School had 70 students in the program. Just a point of mention, we are also intending with some grant funding through Title I to offer four more Saturday attendance sessions to really put a strong point of emphasis on addressing chronic absenteeism, getting kids in the school during vacation and on Saturdays to reengage them and help them make up lost attendance. Finally, extended-year summer programming is right around the corner. Happy to report the summer months are ahead. We have begun staffing and preparing for the 2025 summer programs. Grant funding affords us the ability to provide extended-year instruction for students who are referred to the Title I and III programs. Furthermore, students with extended-year programming on their educational plans will attend one of our Special Education Summer Programs. The elementary programs will be housed at Jarwick School this summer. The air conditioning is ready to go, and we will conduct a summer programming orientation for our summer staff members early this coming June.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Sorry, just one question. On the Attendance Academies you mentioned, the Saturday, would that be for both Whitcomb and high school?
That one is only intended for the Whitcomb School, and it's, it's four Saturdays.
Okay, I just, sorry, wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have two questions. One, I'm just curious, on this extended school year at Jarwick, is that a change this year? Is it usually at Goodnow?
Yeah, we...
Why the change?
We have tried to balance the summer programming. Last year, it was the air conditioning project that did not afford us the opportunity to have the camps at Jarwick. Goodnow with the dehumidification system, it's comfortable there. However, we have kind of shared the responsibility of, of elementary summer programming with schools that do have the air conditioning ability.
Can I just add, it also allows us to do a deep cleaning at Goodnow this summer, which we haven't been able to do for the last couple of years.
Gotcha.
And Principal Patel is aware and ready, ready to go.
All right. My second question is, can you tell us what, a little bit about what the students are doing during the attendance? What are we calling it? Attendance Academies? Like, are they, they're new lessons? Are they working on...
So at the high school level, it's a mixture of two primary focuses. The, one is they do engage in the Apex Learning Platform, which is like an online program where they can make up lost credit. They can remediate skills through the online programming. They do that for a portion of the, of the session because that's just a lot to ask a kid to be on a computer for that entire day. The other portion of the session for the high school students are like, they run them in circles, but they're just formats for them to discuss what some of the barriers are to getting to school. Some of the staff members who are at the program talk about healthy habits for school attendance. There's some coaching, some social and academic coaching to help prevent some of the barriers that are causing students to not get to school. So there's like a balance of, let's talk about some of the reasons and how we can reengage, and then let's also give you an opportunity to make up some of the work that you've missed because of your attendance. At the Whitcomb School, it is primarily focused around the reengagement. They try to incorporate some activities that involve like some team-building skills, some fun things. They unfortunately don't have the online platform where they can make up the lost credit, but they are remediating some academic skills in a different style. But it's primarily focused around activities just to reengage the students back in school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, and one more around the math instruction. I just was curious to understand, how is this kind of coordinated around the math curriculum that is part of our budget for this next year?
It's instrumental, and just as, to mention like some of the context with how we introduced our literacy program, which now spans grades K through eight. We developed, we worked with the Department of Ed, we worked with the TNTP organization, and we received grant funding to help us with the materials and the, and the training along the way. The vision was kind of step one to set the course for what we wanted literacy instruction to look like in the district, specifically in relation to that core program into reading and into literature. So our vision work then took on a K through 12 scope to make sure that everything, everyone was on the same page, and we kind of understood what, what we wanted literacy instruction to look like, K through 12. And we did solicit feedback from the families with that process. We're doing the same thing now with mathematics, and we're kind of taking a step back because we have introduced into math grades 6 through 8 at the Whitcomb School, but we are going to be launching into math grades K through 5 at the elementary schools. So it's imperative that we get this vision underway. We're going to make it a, a K through 12 vision and have it connected to math instruction globally, not just around the program, grades K through eight. But the vision itself is basically around like, why, what is important for us as educators and for families and caregivers around the subject of mathematics? And some of the questions that we're going to ask the families are, are pretty general. Like, what do you hope your child will be able to do with math as they get older? I mean, we saw an example of, you know, brilliant robotics earlier this, this evening. How important is it that your child, on a scale from very important to not important, enjoys math, can explain their thinking, solves problems in different ways, gets the right answer quickly? So just getting some general feedback from families and caregivers about why math is instruction to their children, instruction is important to their children, and then we can kind of mold the way we're, we're teaching this new program, K through eight, to kind of accommodate for those needs.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, moving on. Acceptance of minutes, minutes of the April 8th, 2025 School Committee Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the April 8th School Committee Meeting? Seeing none? Yes?
Well, it's just a little minor thing. I think that, I was trying to look up the previous, what, 9B. The, it wasn't the Chamber Orchestra, it was the quintet that was here. So it wasn't like we had a whole orchestra here, it was just five members. It was, it was, it was the quintet, not the Chamber Orchestra. So I think that should be edited. 3B.
3B?
3B. Under presentation.
Chamber Orchestra, yeah.
Because we didn't have the whole orchestra here, was the quintet. Okay, thank you.
Motion as amended. And seconded to approve the April 8th minutes as amended. Any other further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor to support the amended minutes. Motion carries. Thank you very much. There is no one in the audience, so their public comment will only be said once. Public comment. Seeing none, we will move on. Action items and reports. We already approved the Marlborough High School Robotics Overnight Trip, and we already approved the School Committee Budget. So it's, moving on to acceptance of donations, which is on 9C. We have four of them, so Boston Scientific for Richer Elementary School for $30. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Approves on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the donation from Boston Scientific? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Good Nation Foundation Grant Investigating History for the Whitcomb School for $39,200.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approves on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the grant for Whitcomb. Motion carries. Good Nation Foundation Grant Democratic Knowledge Project for Whitcomb, Kane, Jarwick, Goodnow, and Richer Schools for $74,340.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approves on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding the grant? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. And the last one is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Credit for Life for the Marlborough High School Reality Fair for $2,500.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the grant for the Reality Fair? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to reports of school committee subcommittees. Seeing none? Policy is being addressed.
Our policy, yeah. We just recently had a meeting earlier this morning, I had to think. But I think we may have had another one right in time. So, uh, so we will have some policies coming forward in our next meeting around some of the visitors in school, as well as wellness policy. Sorry, had to think about that. And we have some other things we've been working on, and you'll see some things soon. Thank you so much.
Anything else? Seeing none, moving on. Members forum. Anything for members forum? Anything for members forum? Nope.
Did you sign the warrant? I signed the warrant. Thank you, I reviewed and signed the warrant.
Okay. Anything else?
We have the Day on the Hill coming up on Monday, right?
Oh, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yes.
Say that again?
Yeah, I see Day on the Hill is on...
Oh, yeah.
Tuesday.
Day on the Hill, Tuesday.
And our friend won't be joining us this year because he'll be off in...
Unfortunately. He'll be in Dallas, but...
But I know you've got, three or four of your other colleagues are coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, annual advocacy day at Beacon Hill. So school committee members and students come to be, come and talk to legislators and hear from legislators, and good time is had by all. And aside from that, afterwards, all of the VOTEC schools, our friends at ACABET included, the students prepare lunch for everyone. So it's, it's their, one of their big times every year to show off their, their work. So it's a good day.
Yes.
Quick question. So at this point, we voted on the budget, it's moved forward to you. Do I understand correctly that it's going to be headed to city council for their next Monday meeting?
It's going to be on the agenda for Thursday, and then we'll have a meeting on Monday.
Okay. And then at that point, do you anticipate that they would then set up their plan for hearings?
My assumption would be the following Monday, so the 12th.
Okay.
That's my assumption, on Monday.
So can I...
Once I have that information, I'll be happy to send it to you.
So I was just going to say, though, can, can you at least communicate that we would normally have our meeting on Tuesday night? So my hope would be that they would not put anything relative to the school budget on that Tuesday night, that Tuesday, just because it wouldn't allow for us to really freely be a part of any of that communication and support.
Correct.
So if you could at least express that to them, that would be really helpful.
You got it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. It's everyone's favorite part of the night.
I'm sure.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I think there was a second, because you all said it at the same time, but I will second that. Questions, comments, concerns about adjourning? Seeing none, all in favor, adjourning at 8:23. We are adjourned at 8:23. Thank you.